Thank you, everybody, for coming to tonight's Bloomfield Township Board Meeting. If we could first start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we'll start with public comment. If anybody wants to come up to the podium, just let us know your name and address, and you'll have the three minutes.
Good evening. Stephen Arbut, this is Edie Arbut. We're at 6394 Muirfield Court. We got a notice of an assessment for a late fee for our taxes. We mailed it on the Saturday before it was due on the 14th, which gave two extra days for it to get there. It cleared our bank on the 15th, but we still got assessed a $374 fee. When we called the clerk's office, they said, "Oh, we got it late." But this has never kind of happened before to us, so we're looking to hopefully get the $374 fee erased. We've never had a problem like this before, never had a late fee, never had any taxes not be on time, and it was, I think, a mail issue is more or less what happened.
With public comment, just remember, we take in everybody's comments, but we don't need anything else.
No, I have the documentation in case you want it. Thank you.
Thanks for the request.
Anybody else want to come on up?
I have submitted a similar one.
Sorry, can you come up to the -- yeah, this is the public comment. This is a public comment, yeah.
Okay, I mean, I have a similar request.
Give your name and address.
Sure. My name is Rajesh Rada Krishnan, 5608 Lhasa Road, Bloomfield Hills. I've been a resident for over 10 years, and I am here to appeal for a waiver of the penalty that was charged on my late payment of taxes. I don't have, I mean, anything other than, hey, I was a week late, my mistake, done this for 10 years. If not, I'll just observe the board meeting and enjoy the experience. It's my first time here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to come on up to public comment?
Seems to be a popular item. My name is Craig Lamman. I live at 4674 Ravine Drive. I've been a loyal township member for 23 years now. We've always paid our taxes on time. I did hand-deliver the taxes the night before, and I didn't look at my watch, I didn't look at my phone, so maybe I missed the 5:30 by a few minutes, but it wasn't much. It was one of those crazy nights. I had to come down from my mother's because my wife was working late, and I had the duty of paying it, so it was on me, so that's why I'm here. I don't think we've ever been late in 23 years, and just ask that you waive the -- it's 2:26:25, and it's Lamman on Ravine, and thank you.
Anybody else want to come up for public comment? Come on up.
My name is Patricia Sonnier. I live at 1230 Manor Wood Circle, and I miss seeing you tonight at the wonderful farce that we attended.
I was there for two and a half hours.
I was there.
Yeah, all of us were there.
We were there.
I didn't see you. I really am miss that I did not see you, but
Surprised.
That was an absolute farce. I understand -- I know, because I've been in the township for 45 years. We have HRC as, you know, doing a lot of work for us. I think you ought to fire them. They were the ones that were in charge of that. They probably got their instructions from MDOT, but they should have never handled it the way they did. And if you listen, you know, I asked one question, I got one answer, and then I moved to another table, or I walked past another table, and somebody was asking the same questions I did, and they got completely different answers. So these people were just bending over and pulling these answers out of their rear ends. It was unbelievable, and I knew that you didn't like the way they were having it from what the message was that you sent out on the 23rd, and I don't know if anybody else got this message, but I've known you long enough, I know you are attentive to details. You got that that day. You must have gotten it late in the day because you didn't put that out until after 6 o'clock, and then it was on the website the following day. I suggest you call a press conference, and you address it to ABC, NBC, CBS, PBS, CNN, whoever you can get here to the township, and let them know what's going on, because basically, oh, God, MDOT is trying to just rear-end us on this thing. It is absolutely incredulous, the plan that they have and what they plan to do, and I asked, well, when all of this was under construction for I-75 four years ago, why didn't you do -- oh, well, this has got nothing to do with that. Yes, it does too. Those ramps that are there right now were under construction. Well, we want to repave Square Lake. Well, Square Lake was closed down when I-75 was closed down, and that was your opportunity. These people are not fiduciaries, good stewards of our money, and this is not our township money. But you've got to have some clout, don't you, to, I mean, have you thought of a press conference? Do something to get it out to -- because my understanding, because this is another thing that they were saying, "We want to know what you have to say, but you've got to put it in writing. You know, we're not writing down your notes, you've got to put it in writing to us, you've got to give it to us that way, but the only way that we're going to know anything is if we hear from residents." So if you were on TV letting residents know, it's going to get farther than that e-bulletin. And so now I've got nine more seconds, and I just want to tell you, I'm really proud of the job you're doing for us. The rest of the trustees too, but thank you, Danny. And if nobody knows what I'm talking about, look up on the website.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else that would like to come up? It's hard to top. Is anybody else like, public comment? Okay, so we're going to close public comment. Brian, do you want to?
I do. So as treasurer, my responsibility is to invoice and collect taxes. We collect taxes twice a year, in summer and winter. Summer taxes basically go to all kinds of entities other than the township, and then the winter tax, the township is included upon. Statutorily, if you're -- if one is late paying their summer taxes, the invoices go out on June 1st for summer taxes, and then they're due and payable without penalty by September 14th. If they're not paid on September 14th, after that date in September, it's 1% per month, and that's statutory rates per the state of Michigan. December taxes, the winter taxes, go out on December 1st and are payable through February 14th. On both invoices, summer and winter, it says in numerous places and in red, taxes are received, taxes are deemed paid when received, and clearly, we can't control the mail. There are a lot of different avenues to pay taxes, including the drop box at the front door. And, you know, I get that, you know, people don't love paying taxes, and then quite frankly, having to pay interest or penalty on top is somewhat deemed to be, you know, insult upon injury, but we can all, you know, as treasurer, I can only send the taxes out when I do. I can't direct the mail, nor can I really get people to pay on a timely basis. So the state allows, and I've asked our attorney just to detail the section of the statute that talks about the 3% penalty. Mark, if you would do that?
Yeah, the applicable statute is MCL 211.44, specifically subsection 3. It provides, first, an administrative fee for taxes that aren't paid, and it's a 1% fee. The township does not, my understanding, does not assess that fee. However, the late penalty charge of 3% is statutory, and the section I cited, the treasurer has no ability to waive that penalty charge. Subsection 4 does provide the governing body of the local property tax collecting unit. In other words, the township board can do that, but the treasurer has no authority to do that on its own.
Thank you, Mark. So what I have done, and just to give you a sense of then what we do when on the tax date, so on September 14th and on February 14th, I do not take putting interest or penalties lightly. It's not something I'd like to do or want to do, truly. So what I do is, at 5:30, I go out to the drop box, we look at all the different sources, I take a picture of it, I actually hang out there for a little while because sometimes people come running in. I left there a little before 6 o'clock, and no one was there. So what then happens is, the next day, unfortunately, there's then a 3%, and February 15th, there's then a 3% tax that's imposed. What we then do on the 15th is send out courtesy reminders to all of the residents who haven't paid their roughly, for the board's knowledge, we have about 19,000 parcels, we had about 1,100 letters that we sent out, meaning that there were about 1,100 people that hadn't paid their taxes by the 14th. So as soon as we can, the next day, we send out a courtesy reminder about paying between the 15th to the end of the month, because if the taxes aren't paid by tomorrow, it then goes to the county, and then there's a 4%. The 3% goes to 4%, and that goes to the county, and then the taxes have to be paid at the county. So not only is it a financial hassle, but it's also, just logistically, we can't accept payment for it at that point. So sometimes, it's even a bigger problem for people because they have to get the bill here, and then they have to pay it up at the township, I mean, up at the county. I have asked people, whoever has had issues with the 3%, and again, I respect that, we are, my office has given them the information that if they would like to come and publicly address this body, they may. It's then up to this body, if this body would like to hear the specific appeals, it can do that, and it can do that by adding an agenda on to, having a motion to add an agenda on to the, our meeting this evening, to, you know, have a hearing regarding these issues. So if someone would like to make a motion to hear these issues in more detail, it would be up to this board to make a motion to do. If we don't hear it, then we would just move on, and they would not be waived. If that, in fact, happens, I would strongly encourage anyone who's either in attendance or in the, in listening to this, to please pay by tomorrow, otherwise, it will then go up to the county and be 4% if it's not paid.
Although I don't have a motion, I got one of your love letters this year for the first time, so I do understand how you can live here for a long time, live your 50 years, and something happens, but I also, just to let you know, we don't play favoritism. I had to pay a late fee as well, because my mortgage company, something fell through, and somehow it didn't get paid this time. So just so you know, we don't play favoritism in that, even I had to pay a penalty this time, and it sucks. But, yeah, my husband's back there laughing, so it's not so funny for us right now, but I do feel your pain, because I am feeling it right now, but that's why I just wanted to make sure to add, your love letter wasn't exactly the first thing I wanted to see, but you did prevent me from getting a 4%, so I do say thank you on that. Seeing Brian keeps from the township isn't always the best one.
Exactly, exactly.
Treasury is attached to it.
Exactly.
But that was just what I had to add. Does anybody else have anything to add?
As much as I sympathize with the late fees, I think if we start making one exception, then there's another exception.
Could you speak up with the mic? We cannot.
Oh, sure. I'm sorry, is my mic, my mic's on. I just want to say, I do sympathize, and, you know, we all make mistakes, or we all run late. As much as, you know, it might be nice if we could just waive it, you can see where this is related to the state, goes to the county, and if we start waiving, then it's probably going to have a snowball effect, would be my only concern. And since Supervisor Walsh got a penalty that doesn't change my, you know, we're not going to make favors or exceptions for any of us, even on the board, so I'm sorry for that, that you have penalties.
And then, so just to move on to also, we did have something else I wanted to add real quickly for, I don't know if I ever actually closed public comment. Did I close public comment?
Yes, you did.
I thought you did, yes.
All right. So just to also mention, for MDOT, for anybody who is paying attention right now, you have till March 13th to reach out and talk about that. It is discussing removing Ramp B, which is the Square Lake access onto, or access onto the Square Lake Business Loop that gets you on I-75. That is not the best option, it was just necessarily the cheapest option, so we did fight against that. We did come together, there were hundreds of people there tonight. It was wonderful to see on a bad icy day in the middle of the day, because it started at 4:00. Many, I think, everybody was there from here, so it was great to see the township was there. We had the school superintendent was there to talk about public safety, as well as buses and everything. We had our fire chief there, our police chief there to talk about public safety. There were residents en masse, but just to let everybody know that your voice, sometimes, believe it or not, is stronger. So our voice was to get you all there, and MDOT needs to hear your voice, because every one of those gets attached to the recommendation that they send up. So we've already talked to the political people that will be voting on it as well, but the more people that write to discuss that, the better. If you don't know what's going on, please go to our website or Facebook. You can access the MDOT Square Lake Business Loop. There's a QR code on there that you can scan, that'll take you right to their website. Again, it's the Bloomfield Township Government Facebook page, our website, or within the e-news.
I actually have a copy of it. If anybody here wanted to just take a picture of it, that would be fine too, if that's easier than going to the website and you want to comment. But having been there and listening to the public comments, as well as some of the responses from MDOT and HRC, you know, they just kept saying, "We want your comment, but you have to fill out this form," and I know that sounds like a pain, but please do it, because it's important. There are many options that they did not show you ahead, and I can't speak for the whole board, but I believe we are not in favor of the cheapest option, that is the one that they're showing you, in terms of safety and what's in the best interest.
Anybody else want to share anything about that? Okay.
We will continue to work on behalf of the community and echo the concerns of the community, and that'll continue with our state reps with MDOT, and we will continue to pursue that.
Absolutely.
You were there too? Yeah, I was.
Right. There were a lot of people there. Given how bad the weather was, I was surprised, and we all discussed that, how surprised how many people were there. One of the audience members in the session I was in asked them if they'd heard anybody support the proposal, and one of the presenters said that they had heard one, one in support.
I didn't know there was one.
So, right. So.
I thought it was quite interesting to see the alternatives, and when I got in there, the gentleman went through, and I kept pushing him, like, they kept wanting to just stall, it seemed like, and I kept saying, "Okay, I've got to get to a meeting at 7:00." And I went through each one of the boards, and I got to the third one, and I said, "Okay, I know what I want, this one, and this is why, and this is what I might tweak." And they go, "Well," and I'm looking at the prices, and I go, "I know that's more expensive, but do you want to take the shortcut and then cause other issues or other safety issues?" And I think they were a little caught off-guard at how many people had some really constructive comments from the public, so they are listening.
Great. All right, so we'll go to our first agenda, our second agenda item of the board minutes of February 13th, 2023. We all had a chance to look them over, unless there are any changes or comments, I look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Showstack, support by trustee Burnett, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Next, we'll go on to the closed session board minutes of February 13th, 2023. We all had a chance to look that over, unless there's any changes or comments, I look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Murray.
Support.
Support by trustee Faqui, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Next, we'll go to discussing the Discharge of Prohibited Restrictive Covenants Act, and this will be presented by Clerk Brown.
Thank you, Supervisor Walsh. Tom is going to run this PowerPoint for me. We also have a special guest here today, Oakland County Clerk and Register of Deeds, Lisa Brown, is joining us. She is going to present with me as well. I'm going to cover a PowerPoint here about some background concerning this act and the reason why it's necessary or needed, and County Clerk Brown will talk with us a little bit about some of the additional details and practicalities of acting on this, if folks wanted to do so. So this is not an item we've got on the agenda to vote on, it's an item on the agenda to draw attention to, an important issue. It's also an item on the agenda to point out history and point out a new law to allow homeowners and HOA's homeowner associations and condo associations to discharge discriminatory language in their deeds. This is an example of such language. Neither the whole or any part of the premises shall be at any time let, leased, rented to, or permitted to be occupied by any person or persons other than Gentiles of the Caucasian race, except that this covenant shall not prevent occupancy by domestic servants of a different race or nationality employed by owner or tenant. That's an example of language that was placed in many deed restrictions by developers and builders throughout the United States during a period of time from the late 19-teens to the mid-1940s. Those restrictions like that is from a restriction that exists in this township, and there are others. I reviewed many, many of them throughout the township. This is an issue that, in fact, I've been working on and thinking about for a while in law school. Almost 30 years ago, I worked on a project at Michigan Law to map the existence of these restrictions throughout the metro Detroit area, and sadly to say, they were prevalent in many areas. And because of the difficulties in removing restrictions from deeds, they continue to remain in many restrictions today. Want to point out, however, they have been unenforceable and illegal for a very long time, but they remain in the restrictions nonetheless. This is being talked about now at this time because last year, Michigan Legislature passed the Discharge of Prohibited Restrictive, Prohibited Restrictive Covenants Act, which creates a process to allow HOAs and homeowners, where these restrictions exist, to remove the restrict, these discriminatory restrictions from their plats and deeds. We're going to talk a little bit about the process for that and the history, and then Clerk Brown is going to talk, help advise us on what people can do to get this done, if that's what they want to do. So the act lays out that discriminatory restrictions and deeds or plats are illegal. It prevents the enforcement of these by statute. As I mentioned earlier, there are other statutes that have previously prevented that, such as the Fair Housing Act passed federally in the 1960s. It also establishes a process, which we'll talk a little bit about, and Clerk Brown will spend, will give us much more detail about that. So, Tom, next slide, please. So what is the discharge of prohibited restrictive covenants? And I want, I guess maybe because I'm a lawyer, and I did study this a little bit, I do want to dig into the history a little bit more. So in the late 1800s through the early 1900s, many communities around the country adopted zoning laws that specifically prohibited home ownership by African-Americans, Jews, single women. Discrimination was enshrined in many local laws. They were not in the township, they were not in Bloomfield Township. In 1917, the United States Supreme Court said it was unconstitutional for a community to have a zoning ordinance that discriminated in this way against home ownership. But unfortunately, people with hate in their heart and discrimination on their minds looked for other ways to implement their ideas, and restrictive covenants, which are contractual agreements, began sprouting up throughout the country in, at the time that builders were building subdivisions, and they were used in the Detroit area and other areas throughout the entire country. Detroit was not unique in any way. They became very common in 1926, because the United States Supreme Court said that a restrictive covenant, being a private contract between two individuals, was not unconstitutional, and that you could, in fact, have a restrictive covenant preventing someone who did not, who was other than Gentiles of Caucasian race or other restrictions. This is a common type of way it was phrased, but these restrictions discriminating against people were phrased in different ways. That true was constitutional. The reason being, their theory being, was that it was no state act involved. Constitution only prevents government action and regulates government action, it does not necessarily, it does not regulate private action in many ways. So these greatly increased from the late 1920s up until the mid-1940s. Within the township, communities that were built during that time, not all of them, some of them, have these restrictions in their deeds. In 1948, the United States Supreme Court changed course and ruled that it was unconstitutional to enforce these private agreements. These private agreements, if they went to court, now it became state action because the state was actually enforcing it, sending out the sheriff and so forth. And so enforcement became illegal. It was not illegal to have these in people's deeds, it was not illegal for individuals to follow them in their deeds, and many people did, simply refusing to sell their property to people they did not, they did not wish to sell to for discriminatory reasons. This case, by the way, the lead case is called Shelley versus Kramer, which came out of St. Louis. Interesting to note, too, that the companion case, called McGee versus Snipes, was from Detroit. In 1968, the Fair Housing Act was passed, which made it illegal to discriminate individuals based on their race or religion or gender and other reasons. But removing these restrictions from deeds continued to be rarely done. In order to remove a restriction from a deed, it typically involves unanimous agreement by every person who has interest in the property and the restriction, which prevented many communities from doing so. However, this new statute, the Discharge of Prohibited Restrictive Covenants Act, now allows organizations, and in fact, requires them, to go ahead and do so. So in quick summary, you know, any property owner or homeowner association or condo association which contains these prohibited restrictions can work with the Register of Deeds, who is, Oakland County Register of Deeds is here, Lisa Brown, to discharge them from their covenants. We're going to go through a little bit of detail in the next slides about that. One way is that a homeowner could initiate this to remove a restriction on his or her own property by completing the necessary forms and recording them with the Register of Deeds. Next slide, the association can also do this and record it for the entire association by a simple majority vote of the members of the HOA, of the homeowners association or condo association, and then the association would file a discharge form on behalf of the entire community. If an individual has noticed these restrictions in their community and they'd like to have them removed on a community-wide basis, they can submit a request to their HOA, and the HOA is responsible to determine within a reasonable amount of time if a prohibited restriction is in a deed or other instrument, and then they must shell, file a discharge form to remove them. If that doesn't happen, a court action can be brought against the HOA, the homeowners association, and compel the filing of a discharge form. So in quick, you know, summary, I just want to encourage individuals to search for their, in their deeds if they are so inclined to identify whether these exist, and proceed to discharge prohibited restrictive covenants from their platted and other recorded deed instruments. And it doesn't fix what happened before, but it's a statement about, you know, where they stand today on this issue. So I invite Oakland County Clerk Lisa Brown to continue on from here to help us understand some of the practicalities and add her other, any other thoughts you have. Thank you for being here, by the way. It's such an icy night.
It's Michigan.
Yes.
No, thank you for having me, and thank you for bringing this to the attention of the residents of Bloomfield Township. I want to say that, so first of all, our property records, our online searchable database goes back to 1964, so most likely, you're not going to find it on my website. So when we talk about search, the best way really is going to be to call my office, and I'm going to give that phone number, because it's not like mine. It's my office, but not my office, right? I want you to call Track Index. I want you to call Tracked Index, and that phone number is (248) 858-5697. And my staff will be able to pull archives. So, I want to clarify, if you have a copy of your deed, it may not have that language in there. It may say, "We're adopting," or language like that, "from previous deeds," right? So, we need to go back to our archival records. What we have found so far is, like Clerk Brooks said, you know, the 1920s, 1930s is where we're seeing this kind of language. And I want to emphasize that not every restrictive covenant is a prohibited restrictive covenant. So, I can tell you from my own neighborhood, and I'm next door in West Bloomfield, there's a list of restrictive covenants in my neighborhood that was developed in the 70s, but they're like garage can't face the road, or no above-ground pools. Like, those are restrictive covenants, but they're not prohibitive. They're not discriminatory. So, that's the distinction between what this act covers versus just any other restrictive covenant. So, if your property was developed after 1968, you should be fine. But again, my staff is happy to search. We have a form that, right now, the county website is being overhauled, and they are promising, saying that it will be all done and clean and pretty and new in April. At that point, so, because right now, we're frozen about, really about putting new data, new information on our website, but we'll have a link to that form, but it's really about having that language. You can write it out yourself. That's in the statute, and I know you had a slide that had that language in there. But we will have a form for people to be able to use. When you call, don't expect like immediate answer. It's going to take time to be able to pull those records up. We don't have all those right at our fingertips. Some of them are old and in storage, so, you know, my staff will ask for contact information to get back to on what they find. We have been, as people have been asking and calling, we've had a few, so we've found a handful, one in Bloomfield Township, one HOA. And I don't have the authority to file one of these myself. I am on the legislative committee for the Michigan Association of Registered Deeds, and that was a discussion as to who would have the authority to be able to record this? And I said, "Well, I'd like to record it for my whole county," and then that didn't happen. But anyway, and just so you know, like, recording most things in my office, there will be, there is a $30 fee. That's statutory. That's not me doing it. That's the law. And that's basically it, plus you. If there are questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Great, thank you.
So, Lisa, does one have to be a property owner in order to be able to do this? You can't go to someone else's neighborhood?
Yeah, you can't do it on somebody else's. You have to, although, yes, you have to be the current property owner or a member of the homeowners association. If one member of the HOA goes to the HOA and says, "I want this," then they have to do it for the whole neighborhood, not just that one house.
Is that then recording everyone individually, or is there a one blanket then that is recorded for?
For the HOA, it would be one, just like as, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And I want to say one other clarification. When we say like, it's, I forgot the word we use, let's see, hang on. Taking the language off, I forgot how we worded that, but...
Discharge?
No, not discharge. The, hang on for a moment. Abolishing, removing and abolishing the language, we're not going in and taking white out over an old document. So, you have two choices, actually, when you record, if you are recording one of these. You can record this form by itself, or you can attach a copy of that original paperwork with the, I'm going to say, offensive language, the anti-Semitic, the racist, everything else language, and cross it out. But, I mean, we're not whitewashing history, right? We're not whiting this out that people don't know that this ever existed. It's still there, but this document is saying, we're making it unenforceable, even though it has been by law, and acknowledging like, this language is here, but it doesn't mean anything anymore. We see it's here, and I don't like it, and that, so.
Thank you.
About how many HOAs have come forward and done this so far?
Just a few have, we've only had one recorded so far, and that was an individual recording this. It's still kind of new. It's just getting out there. People are just learning about it, so. But as we've had, like I said, as we've had people call, we're keeping a list so that if somebody else calls from that same neighborhood, we already know.
Right.
So, we're trying to keep a running list. But, you know, we don't have the staff to research every single HOA or every parcel in the county. And like I said, kind of unfortunately, but that our searchable database, our electronic searchable database, goes back to 1964. So, for people, for counties who, you know, go back farther, and the reason is cost, before anybody asks me, "Why don't you go back farther?" It's expensive. But, you know, they could probably look by, I know other counties have, in other states, because other states are doing this, too. Their vendor has a program where they're searching for certain words in documents to help find those documents, but it's a very long list of words, especially as, you know, decades changed, language changed. So, anyway, but we're happy to assist anyone in looking up those documents.
Well, thank you for coming to talk to us about that tonight, and thank you, Martin, for bringing this to our attention. I was not aware, and did you say there's just one subdivision in the township that this applies to?
No, no.
I thought you said one.
I read one.
Oh, you read one, okay.
There are many. I don't count one, but I don't know if it's, we'll compare notes later, but...
Well, I think it's really important, and I'm glad we're aware and we address it.
But there are many.
Thank you very much. I know we discussed this before it was put on the agenda, and you were aware, this is something that the board had brought up, and you brought it, in fact, you did a search because, in fact, I had discussed this back in 2016, as have many board members. It was on, the media was here, Channel 7, they had a story on it, how offensive it was, and how it was in many, many of our subdivision homeowners associations. In fact, anything that is my homeowners associations from the 1920s, and the language in there was just, it was so offensive, it was disgusting. But they sold to me, anyway. Only because it's...
Unenforceable.
Unenforceable. However, still don't like to see that out there. And this is just a great tool to take another step to make sure that it's not condoned, and that people are noticing that this is something that's not acceptable. So, thank you for, both of you, for bringing this and discussing it, and Lisa, I would expect that you're going to have a lot of subdivisions, homeowners associations, and individual owners in the next many years using the Register of Deeds to record these.
Yep. We're not, we're not unique in this issue, and so many other communities had that, you know, especially the ones that developed significantly during the 30s and 20, late 20s and up till mid 40s. But today's, you know, today there's an opportunity for us, for individuals, and I got to say, nobody's alive anymore who drafted these, recorded these deeds, but today, there's an opportunity for people to take a stand about that.
Maybe so.
The 30s don't...
They weren't lawyers drafting deeds.
How about my dad was a lawyer?
I think it's also interesting, Danny pointed this out, that literally and figuratively, when you look at the complexion of the community and look at the dynamics of this board, there will only be one board member that could technically live here based on those restrictions. So, I think it's a lot. And again, Lisa, thank you, and thank you, Martin, for bringing this to our attention, and hopefully the community will act because it really is a scar on a lot of deeds that can be healed in a certain way, so.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks.
And thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Clerk Brooks.
Absolutely. Good to see you.
So, next we have Chief John Leroy here with us. We're going to consider approving the allocation of ARPA dollars a little earlier for the purchase of the Sutford Fire Truck. I hope he had explained that although, yes, we are still doing a survey, it's going to be going out, I believe, by Monday or so on other ARPA. This one is a large chunk of change that would hit us if we wait much longer, so.
So, first and foremost, I understand the community and what we've been trying to do around the township and discussions on the ARPA money and moving forward, but I felt that it was pretty prudent, once we did some math on the request, it pretty much speak for itself. So, I come before you tonight to request a purchase of a 100-foot ladder truck tower from the Sutford Corporation for $1.783 million. And I apologize for the speed at which this came up. We've been designing this truck and working on it for past several months, and in our meetings last week, we were told of a significant cost increase that was going to be incurred on March 15th, another 8% bump on price. And 8% is generally not that big of a jump, but when it's on a $1.79 million project, it equates to a $142,000 increase. So, I reached out to the supervisor, Walsh, and said, "Here's what's going on," and she said, "We need to try to make a move on this for the board to decide on seeing that safety." So, this apparatus is a specification using the Sourcewell bid process, just like we've used with all of our most recent engines and rescues. It's a group purchasing plan used nationwide. All the companies, say, can submit bids for the projects, and it allows us to skip the steps of, when we send it out for bid, bringing them in here, having to analyze them, break them down, do what meets our bid, what doesn't, and then awarding a project. So, just, it's more effective, and it saves time and dollars on our end doing it. They do all the bidding for us upfront. So, what this does is, Sutford is the company that we've been using, and it allows us to standardize our fleet as well. So, we're saving money on the maintenance and parts on the backend of the projects because now we will have three trucks with the same motors, the same brakes, the same, all the parts associated with it. It allows our mechanics to keep them on the shelves and familiarize themselves with the trucks, and it really speeds up the process when it comes to maintenance as well. So, this tower truck is for, will be built over the next, won't be finished for three years, so won't even be in until 2026. And it's projected to be, this is different than a standard fire engine or the trucks that we're currently operating, is this is a, it's not going to incur the standard wear and tear, the driving the engines on medicals and rescues on medicals that they go every day. This is going to be strictly for fire alarm, fire emergency response to those type of instances. It's not going to be going out on power, on power lines down, medical emergencies and things like that. It's for structured fires and really anytime we would need an elevated platform to do the operations. Currently, our two ladder trucks that we have are 75-foot ladder trucks. This is 100-foot. And if you ever see a fire truck, our ladder trucks barely reach the front door of the house with the setbacks from the roads. This will allow us to get over those fires and put water on more effectively in a safe manner because it also has a bucket on it as opposed to a ladder, and we have to put personnel on a ladder. What the bucket allows them to do is they don't have to climb a ladder in weather conditions like today with ice building on it, and safety foremost of the crews, it allows them to operate in an enclosed environment on supplied air that's got a tank attached to the truck instead of being on their air packs for extended periods of time, and it allows them to more safely operate all the time, as we've seen with some of our recent fires, including Oakland Hills. Many of the ladder trucks that were there, and Franklin Binghams and Birmingham's were used for 18 hours straight, whereas ours, we couldn't put anybody up on the ladders themselves because of the icing conditions that had occurred. It was just too unsafe. It was, even with them being tethered in and having crews up there, I wasn't comfortable with that and looking out for the safety of everybody there. This tower truck will be a state-of-the-art tower truck. It allows for one single person to set it up. That means setting up the jacks and the systems. One person can operate it as well if need be. Optimally, that's not going to have to happen. You'll have crews in their buckets, but if we didn't have manpower to put in the bucket or around the scene to help out, one person can run this truck from the pump panel. He can operate the tower. He can operate the nozzles that are on the tower. He can do everything from the pump panel with base, with camera screens. He can see where the water's going. He can see everything. He can operate the pump as well. This will have a 360-degree camera system around the truck while it's driving down the road. The officer will be able to see if there's cars on the sides of the truck, if there's anybody behind it for safety reasons. Also on the scene, it lets the engineer can see what's going on around the truck as well. The bucket will have dual 1,250-gallon per minute adjustable nozzles, which allows us to, and they'll have cameras on those nozzles to allow that person at the pump to see exactly where the water is going onto the fire from above. Many times, the person who's running the truck can't see where the water's going, and he's hitting the people in the backyard or off to the side because he just sees it going, and it takes a radio call to let them know exactly how far off or where it needs to be adjusted to. This bucket is also going to, this tower is also going to have a thermal imager incorporated into the top of the tower itself, so the incident commander can view it from his command vehicle. He can see exactly what, in thermal imaging, what's going on around the scene, where the fire is hottest at, where people are moving around the scene at, and he can make more informed decisions from the environment of inside his command vehicle, and he can make, looking for safety of the crews, seeing what's going on on the scene, and really make better decisions involving that fight, what's going on on the fire ground. So, this is truly a, it's a 25-to-30-year investment on the township's behalf, and that's going to be pushing us well into the 2050s, if you think about it, which is quite a considerable ways off. But this is a need for the township, just given the size of our buildings and the type of operations that we need to conduct on these fires that we have going on. I included some mock-up drawings in the board packet and pretty much every part and that's incorporated in the project, so you can kind of see what's going on. And if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Did you also want to address, too, that this one, having the 25-to-30-year and only need one of them, the other two that we have, are those 15-year right now that we're replacing?
Yes. The two ladder trucks that we have right now are scheduled to be on a 15-year replacement cycle. They were the first two that we ever bought. They're what we call a quint. They're a shorter ladder truck. They do many things average, but they don't do anything great. That's the best way to describe it. From, they don't have enough equipment on them, that they can't carry them on a hose that an engine carries, but they have a shorter elevated platform that allows us to get up in the air, but it's not really long enough for what's needed to be done. These trucks were purchased with a plan in mind because needing two ladder trucks, but the wear and tear that they're incurring is not sustainable. And at the time when we bought them, they were roughly $600,000 apiece. To replace our current ladder trucks that we have, we're looking between about $1.1 million now on a 15-year replacement cycle instead of a 25-to-30-year replacement cycle. So, currently, if we decide to go this route, eventually, we will phase out over the next 10 years or so, ladder one and ladder four. Ladder four will eventually be kept as a reserve apparatus to have another ladder truck, but it won't be frontline anymore.
The other one would be sold, then, or?
Eventually, the other one will be sold, yes.
Anyone have any questions?
One quick one for me. Which fire stations does it fit in?
Right now, this truck will, would only fit in station one.
Definitely not station three.
No. And really, this is a, the other stations, this is a very big apparatus, and it's going to take up its own bay by itself. So, the other outstations are still going to be running an engine and a rescue on their calls, so there's no addition, there's no space, even as, it would need a whole nother bay on a station in order to be able to put it somewhere at another station.
Any questions?
We have to spend the ARPA money by the end of '26, commit '24?
Yeah, you commit it by '24, you have to spend it by '26. If they are not, we aren't prepaying it in case, you know, just Jason...
If they are not, we aren't prepaying it in case, you know, just Jason suggested, and Dirk suggested not prepaying it, but if we get towards the end of '26 and it's not ready, then we would just pay at that point. But Dirk and Jason suggested not to prepay the whole thing right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, John, for bringing this...
What do we have to put down on it?
We don't have to put anything down, we just have to...
You just have to order.
Okay.
And with that signing of the contract, that also guarantees that there will be, that locks the price in at that point. There is no, down the line, they can't come back and say, "Well, costs went up this much," or they're, I'm assuming that they've built that into the price that they've given us for the time period.
And what was the time, what was the build on this a year or so ago?
I don't know what it was a year ago, like what it was about four months ago, it was 24 to 28 months, and now we're at 33 to 35.
Okay.
This was a topic of, at OCAT's, our Township Supervisor Meeting today, for Oakland County, everybody's trying to buy fire trucks and fire engines, and another Barnett, Chris Barnett was saying that their engine right now is 30 months. You know, for just regular engines, everything's just getting longer and longer.
I got this one pretty quick.
Was it five below?
That won't fit any station.
I was going to say, it's really what ARPA money is, it's a great use of it, and it's something that will help us accelerate the, no pun intended on that one, but the purchase of the vehicle, and to get it in line for construction. The thing I really liked also with your presentation, Chief, is the fact that it's a safer piece of equipment for the firefighters, and we're able to provide better services to the residents as a result of everything that this, the piece of equipment has, well, the enclosed, what do you call it?
Bucket?
The bucket, but it's enclosed with oxygen, which is fantastic, and just the thermal imaging around, so, you know, I'm 100% in favor, ready to make a motion.
I just wanted to thank you for bringing this to us, and being mindful enough to watch the deadline, and say, if we approve it now, we save $142,000. And I think that was very smart to do that.
In reality, it wasn't a figure 8%, and I'm sitting there, and I pump it in a calculator on my phone, and it's like, wow. I'm 8% on that much money.
Yeah, it's a lot, it's real many.
I mean, that could actually take away one of our other larger RFP projects, if you think about Strategic Plan, or the documents.
Right. We could certainly put that towards some good use, and we do need this, and your presentation was very thorough, so thank you.
Thank you to Brian and Martin for helping. When John reached out to me, I reached out to them, and I said, "I know we haven't put out the survey yet, and I know this goes against what we said, but it's $142,000, so I appreciate you guys also saying that this is important to put on there, so thank you."
Yeah, and I would just add, I had the privilege of doing the fire ops with Trustee Murray, and certainly anything that helps the efficiency and safety of our firefighters, I'm certainly a huge supporter of, so thank you for bringing that to us.
Yeah, we know, we know the weight of that, that, what they wear, we know how exhausting that is, and to think of doing that for, you know, a whole shift, or, I don't know, you probably rotate out, but still, and safety of you guys and the residents is...
You can lose that 40-pound air pack, or 35-pound air pack, and then just wear your mask and clip it right into the oxygen bottle, or the air bottle that's attached to the truck, it's definitely a lot less cumbersome.
Oh, yeah, that's a lot of weight.
I'll support Trustee Barnett's motion.
Did you want to make a full motion, or you're good with just as presented?
As presented, that's fine.
The motion by Trustee Barnett, support by Treasurer Keeps, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
And next, we have payroll and vouchers, unless there's any changes or questions, I would look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Vicki.
Support.
Support by Trustee Barnett, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? And then I would look for...
That we adjourn.
The Clerk Brooke.
Support.
And support by Trustee Murray, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, everybody, have a great two weeks.